Go ahead. Nina. Okay, I said, why, why would we have an email about being in the grass?
Y'all got an email last?
I don't have no email, I don't. We can probably have an email, but I'm saying, what, what's the email say? Why we have an email about being in the grass?
We got an email Dr. Cuddy else tell you.
About? I said about, oh, you know about what? Nina, ain't no construction work going on, we at the site. There's no work being done, Nina, I'm all the way on 154. Don't let me sit on 14, 1470.
You know Tiffany, we have construction work that's going on, we have a contract. We can tell those contracts when to go there and when not to go there.
What was y'all been doing, what was, huh?
You don't see no work?
Ain't, ain't no work being done. Well, that's not lying, what was they been doing? No, ain't no, ain't no material here, we on the site now, Nina. So, I'm telling you, why you don't come and look yourself?
Teacher, the staff, everybody, they not.
Nina, they not making no sense, we're in the grass, we're not at no building. Okay, let's break down this. Say you is going to work. Number one, we not nowhere near any work, we're in the grass, all the way on 154. What that got to do with us being in the grass, Nina, nothing?
You in the grass?
No, Nina, y'all trying to share it with us, to tell us, you can't get in the grass, you know that? And they said that the whole day, I'm out being in the grass.
You cannot be on the property, right?
Nina, Nina, that's garbage, come on, man, we supposed to be better than that? You talking about taking your own property, I run too big, or something like that?
You should have done Tiffany.
Go ahead.
You should have called me.
Nina, I called you, I called you with plenty of heat.
Why didn't you call me?
We asked you, can we call you today? Y'all still with the, the bull crap, not being on the grass, I respect your case? So, so why can't we talk about the firework, to open the video? That ain't nobody in your building, once again.
I'm not gonna talk to you, I'm not gonna argue with you, you need to respect me, all these, we could, we could.
Nina, we did call you to work it out, me and Keith Price. We called, then we asked, and your answer was still no. We asked you, and yet today, Keith Price again called you to ask you, why y'all got the shares out here? Why kids can't clean the grass? Kids, Nina, y'all ain't seen a lot of thousands, some people out here.
A thousand, some people out here.
You drink coffee, you watch the videos, my god, I'm not, I'm not, that's one thing I don't do. My video ain't happening. Ah, you delusional, but okay, I'm gonna talk to you about the fireworks, real quick, y'all, just calling to let you know. I'm gonna blow the fire up, so over here, y'all, uh, y'all send a cord, real quick.
The opening, okay? Now, there was, oh, matter of fact, let's start with this. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna do what I wanna do. I'm gonna give a shout out to Jedidiah Post, right here. Matt people post on this, but I'm still gonna give him the credit right now. Now, this particular post, a couple of months ago, July 10th, it says Tiffany Hager, you're just busting the 205 school district board meeting, threaten a bunch of cities, and shut down the meeting, including threatening this. This is our understanding of now Michael Smith has been hired at Thornton Township. They just made the, um, this a million times worse. Now, is something going on with Hager and the school district? This is what I wanna highlight to you, because this is what this next lawsuit is going to highlight. The information behind Hager and the school district, okay? So, shout out to this contact, yeah, Superintendent Tiffany Hager is suing, suing the school district. That's what she said she was doing, and I still ain't see that damn lawsuit. So, this is the intro to this lawsuit that we read it to you, so it can make sense. Now, let me go into this 4th of July tension. Y'all remember we had that video where she was, he was calling Hager Nino Brown and shit? Where she was like, Nina, Nina, now, why you ain't going, why you gonna call the sheriff on us? Why you gonna try to get us, why we couldn't use the grass, Nina? Now, this is connected to that, now, y'all guys gonna get a clearer picture of that. Details emerged about 4th of July tension between township officials and school district president. The former chief of staff to, um, to Tiffany Hager accused her of recording a phone call between Hager and District 205 School District President Nina Graham. So, it wasn't even Nina who recorded this shit. Now, we know it was Hager who actually recorded this shit. What? So, you see, you, you heard this, her own clickbait. Y'all see that? She was talking about somebody else doing something, but her motherfucking ass is the one that possibly released it. Now, it makes sense, so this was August 6th, at the beginning of the month, remember, y'all? Well, this, when this article was done. The back and forth grab with conflicting information has ensued over allegations of telephone calls caused recorded following tension over Thornton Township soaring 4th of July event. Last month, the Thornton Township High School District 205 Regular Board Meeting, Township Supervisor Tiffany Hager accused the 205 President Nina Graham of recording a private phone conversation in Hager's attempt to gain clarity behind abrupt changes in the township annual event. It's conflicting story, so Hager blaming her, and she blaming Hager. Whatever. Since 2021, the Thornton Township Independence Day Festival has been held in, um, Dor- Thornton Ridge High School in Dalton, where Hager is also the mayor. But the Cook County Sheriff Office had a, drove of, had to govern the grass. So, I do, I govern the grass. Hager said forces that event to relocate to the street. So, basically, they said they couldn't be on the grass, that's why she's like, Nina, Nina, I can't be on the grass? I'm gonna try to pull that up for y'all, so y'all can hear that, okay? So, Thor- um, Thornton Ridge Campus is closed while undergoing, um, capital improvements, including construction on their roof. During the public comment, Hager accused Graham of recording her telephone conversation, threatening to sue. But Nikita Cloud, a public relations specialist and Hager former chief of staff in Dalton, who reached out to Hager and Price on Graham's behalf, is accusing Hager of recording it. Nikita know how to flip that shit, she said, no, you recorded it, prove it. I'm like, what? Why would Hager record her own stuff? That's why Dr. Nikita said, because you ain't trying to tell them, I'm gonna throw it back on you, motherfucker, prove it. Allegations against allegations called cancellation. So, um, okay, it says Cloud encountered, Cloud encountered Graham on July 4th at the local parade, where Graham was visibly distraught. Cloud wrote in a statement that she emailed to the HWH in response to recent reporting. When I asked her what was wrong, she mentioned that she received a disturbing text from, message from Keith Price. That fat ass bully. Let me see, can I put him on the glass? You see? She said, fuck Hinchman, thicker than a snicker, I wish I had a picture of his butt. Y'all know it, how he clowning, where he at? I be having to move some of this stuff off my, damn, I'm gonna get the picture of his butt up here, y'all. And I gotta picture his old thick ass. So, Jacob sent her Hinchman, Keith Price regarding her recording the call between herself and Tiffany. Cloud said, it was clear that she had nothing to do with this call, as you could barely hear her, but Tiffany's voice was loud as, clear as day. Come on, Nina, Nina, that's you, why we can't be on the grass, Nina? It suggested that the call was recorded either by Hager herself or someone on her property. Cloud said that she then texted Price, admitting her tone was defensive, telling him not to contact Graham again, and that she perceived his message as threatening. And, oh, at, at, oh, over 80 year old, Ms. Graham cannot defend herself against such intimidation. And you know that lady had a heart attack shortly after that, y'all? The case that we read it, is, you wanna see, is the foundation to this issue. Okay? So, Cloud said that her former boss had a history of disruptive behavior and dubbed Hager in a common denominator in the text messages. Cloud sent to Price, according to Cloud. In her email, Cloud did not provide the HWH with a screenshot of any, any messages sent to Price. She did provide a screenshot of the text message she sent to Price. Cloud redacted his phone number out of respect for Ms. Price, Mr., no, Cloud redacted his phone number out of respect for Mr. Price, because she's afraid of him, obviously, allegedly. Uh, she said, according to Cloud, she never had any prior interactions or bad experience with Price, adding her personal assumption that this, that he text Graham on behalf of Hager. So, she's like, this, you threaten me out of nowhere. So, Hager did not respond to the email request for comments by the person, let's read the text. Okay, President Nina Graham has requested that neither you nor Tiffany contact her. Any official business can be done via email. She expressed concern that the recorded phone call conversation was a breach of her privacy and found that the tone from Tiffany and now the text from you threatening is clear that the call oriented, originated from your side. And then she has asked that you cease any further contact and harassment. People have better stuff to do with their lives than to be obsessed over a poorly attended event and the chaos that consistently follows your boss. She is a common denominator of all this madness. Ms. Graham had no reason to contact Tiffany. It was quite literally key of, he opposed it. Thanks in advance. So, this was, okay, y'all, I thank you. This was an issue that we had ticked for just this July into August, y'all remember that? Y'all don't need me to play the video, which is like, Nina, Nina, that's you? I'll put this shit at the end for y'all, okay? Um, but what we're gonna do now, since we are two hours and four minutes into the broadcast, thank you guys. We going in, we going in, y'all know what I would do here. Hit the like button, please. Now, let's get into this case, now, this case is directly related to the school district. And how Ms. Hager, Andrew alleged, saw, let me, I'm trying to say, I'm not gonna say this shit. Y'all know what I was about to call him, I was about to just get myself in trouble. And then YouTube would've said I was bullying. But the people involved in this is Hager, Andrew Holmes, most likely Keith Freeman, let me remember. That nigga always involved in this shit. And also, I think Kamal Woods, I think. We're gonna zoom this in. This is about a 20 page read. So, the people was like, why you always reading AI? I could read, but it's a lot, and half of you guys won't do this shit. So, give me the credit, and hit the damn like button, okay? Let's get to this case, and let's listen to the corruption. And now, we can understand the foundational, um, information related to why the, why Hager was going after the school and township, the township, school township. That's what it's called, the school board, okay? I'll send myself off the screen, so y'all can zone on in, baby, y'all know how we do here. Let me see, babe. Okay, let's get to it. Now, this is Dewayne Trash, Thrash versus Thornton Township, Tiffany Hager, Keith Freeman. Okay, and this is from June 13th, 2024, which is two months and a half ago. Lawsuits are still coming in. So, the party that we told you is Mr. Thrash, Township of Thornton, Hager, Keith Freeman. And I think it should be some more people named than this. Let's get to the facts. Thrash began working for Thornton Township in around 2003 as the maintenance manager. In April 2021, Thrash was elected to serve as president of the Thornton Township trustee of the school board, okay? This is where the school board comes in. With his term ending 2027, he still has a term all the way to 2027. Also, y'all wanna hear, I need to verify some information, and I need my, um, to leave our family to help me out. Because I wanna see if he, if Holmes still employed with Thornton Township. Y'all like hell here, but let's first read this. Okay, so, April 2001, Thrash was elected, as I told you guys, to Thornton Township Board as the president. After winning the, uh, uh, after winning the Township School Board position, Thrash continued to work with Thornton Township as the maintenance manager. In or around August 2022, the attorney for the Township School Board Stanley Cusper, and Cusper, Wakuchi Character, these are the name of this law firm, okay? Um, doing business as Weiner Law, that's Wi- Winner Law, Winner Law, that's, that's where they're doing business. Took over as attorney for the Township School Board. So, they took over in 2022. In April 2023, Andrew Holmes, the monster, was elected to serve as a trustee on the Township School Board with his term ending in 2019, y'all. Now, Thornton, it's Thornton Township. If y'all want some justice for, uh, Ms. Duke, y'all better go through the back way, like we doing with Ms. Carver. Y'all better get this nigga fired in every which way you could be fired, every which way. So, was he fired from here? I don't think so, I did not hear this news of trustee Holmes being fired from Thornton Township School Board. And he still works for Dalton. I'm just gonna concede on that note. So, Holmes is also a trustee of the Village of Dalton Board, Board trustee, having first been elected in 2019 and reelected in 2023. Holmes is a close political ally of Hager and Freeman. And earlier April 2023, Freeman approached Thrash about Freeman, so Freeman approached Thrash, this is the president of the school board, about Freeman and Hager's plan to take over and make changes to the Township School Board since Holmes had been elected to the Township Board. So, basically, while they had the opportunity, and Holmes was in there, they said, okay, we got our man in here, we about to take over. I want you guys to think of the significance of this. There is numerous amount of taxes that goes to the school board in every county in the United States. I'm even complaining about how much the rate on the taxes that I have to pay my school board in my county. And that's the same damn thing that's going on in Illinois. So, it sounds to me like Hager and her approach to take over shit seemed like she was trying to take over the school board. And it's spending possibly through Andrew Holmes, and that's my assumption, okay? Mm-hmm, this isn't that stupid as much y'all think. And I'm sorry, I keep calling her BIPCA, that was one thing I kept saying last night, I was listening to a lot, I was like, you called her that a lot. She made me mad, and that word just flowed right on out, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna disrespect my black woman, but this broad, mm. So, in April 2023, Thornton Township approved a $10,000 raise in annual compensation for Thrash in his role as maintenance manager, and, um, to take over in effect in May 2023. So, this was under Hager's intention. He got a $10,000 raise. Do you think that this was a form of bribery, or something that she was trying to do to get him on her side? Allegedly? I'm just saying, I'm just throwing shit out there. But she don't have nothing to do with the, um, board, do, like, well, she has something to do with the maintenance manager. Don't she? Right, y'all? I need y'all to start interacting, make it make sense, y'all, get in the comments. What you have? Let me say, make sure I'm not mute, I'm not mute, y'all, right? Let me see what you got to say. The Cook County Sheriff was afraid to intervene to Dalton or Thornton Township residents' call once the Dalton trustee got a U.S. representative to alert them about the July 4th situation that came. Good. Hey, Mr. Roberts, blessing for being here, I love you, I appreciate you being here. And I'm so sorry, I didn't give you a call. I did see your interview, and I loved your interview you did on the Super Producers page. We will be talking this weekend, if you're available. If you listen to my live, you do know, you will listen, I've been going through some trauma. So, I love you, Mr. Roberts, and thank you, because we, I still have to do part two, we're gonna be announcing part two. And I wanna go over part two budget with you for 2024. You know those numbers, I think we'll have fun on that live. So, I will be in contact with you this weekend, no ifs, ands, or buts about it, okay? I love you. Now, let's get back to what they did. So, do you think the $10,000 raise was an incentive for this president? Unknowingly, like, huh, let me see, $10,000, you better act right. Okay, so, in April 2023, though, um, through the early of May 2023, you go Freeman, that's why Freeman is like a rat, squirreling right now, his name is in all these lawsuits. Freeman took Thrash out to multiple breakfasts and lunches to discuss Freeman and Hager's plan to make changes to the Township School Board. During one of these meetings in either late April 2023 to, to May 2023, Freeman specifically, I know y'all hate the way I say it, but love gracefully, uh, discussed wanting to bring his preferred law firm, Delgado Law Group, as a sole board attorney and counsel for the Township School Board. This, um, is making it a necessity, basically, to terminate Sherry Winner. So, Sherry Winner was the attorney at that time. And I'm telling you guys, please listen to the Super Producers video, which I liked about Delgado and his connection. Here's a reason why this monster, and I'm gonna have to put her on the screen, so I can stimulate y'all, so y'all could be like, ah! Let me put this monster on the screen. Hold on one second. It's a reason why this monster wanted Delgado to be in charge of everything, okay? And so, he had to pull his ass out, because he moving on to bigger and better things, like people who trying to be president, allegedly. So, now, we see that they want to change the school board lawyer to Delgado. During the meeting, Michael T. Delgado, senior president and managing member of the Delgado Law Firm, called Thrash and asked for something to the effort. Are you gonna go along with it? Referring to Freeman and Hager's plan to install Delgado Law Group as the attorney for the Township School Board. In response, Thrash said he had to think about it. This was after the $10,000, they like, what? He gotta think about it. So, on May 12th, 2023, Freeman posted, Freeman, he not even on the board, okay? I thought this was, um, actually Holmes who did it, when I first read it, but it's Freeman. So, on May 12th, 2023, Freeman posted unauthorized public notice on the Township School Board office statement that a special meeting of the Township School Board will be convened on May 15th, 2023, at 3:03, 3:30 PM. Freeman included the agenda therewith. The agenda for the special meeting included, one, installing the new Township School Board trustee Andrew Holmes, uh, peoples in place. Two, terminate the Township School Board relationship with their incumbent lawyer, Sherry Winner. So, they were trying to pull her out in order to appoint Delgado Law Group. So, that was the part two of this agenda. Part three of this agenda, the removal of the current treasurer. Ding, 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 to appoint a new treasurer. Do it sound like a setup for a heist? Do it sound like a setup for a white product, a white collar crime? That's what Hager is guilty of doing, a bunch of white collar crimes. And that's what a lot of public officials do. Y'all see the, you see the setup here? All right, so, Thrash said, I ain't having it. I ain't having it. So, let's keep reading it. On about Sunday, May 14th, 2023, on Mother's Day, Hager and Freeman called Thrash to see if Thrash was going to attend the special meeting and go along with Hager and Freeman's plan. In response, they go, they say strong-armed that meeting. Thrash told Hager and Freeman something to the effect that you want to fire everyone in the office, and I'm not going along with that. On May 15th, 2023, an unauthorized special meeting for the Township School Board conveyed. They did it anyway. However, Thrash and Martin, the other Township School Board trustees refused to attend. So, those two stood their ground, and the other ones showed up. As it was not a legitimate sanctioned meeting of the Township School Board. At the special meeting, which was attended upon information and belief by Hager and Freeman, Andrew Holmes was installed as the trustee, okay? However, because a forum was not present due to Thrash and Laura, Laura not being present, that Delgado Law Firm was not installed as sole board attorney and counsel to the school board. She tried to strong-arm this. Between May 2020, 28th, 2023 to June 3rd, 2023, Thrash went on a scheduled vacation from his position of maintenance manager of Thornton Township. So, you know those paychecks done directly are under Hager's intention. So, I do believe she tried to slip him an extra $10,000, like he'll go along with it. Mm, 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 and that's my, that's my synopsis. So, on June 2014, 2023, um, Thrash received a call from Dr. Jerry Williams. Now, I didn't get to look up who Williams is, but I would love for you to be able to tell me, Mr. Roberts, if you do know, the executive director of the Transitional Operation at Thornton Township. Maybe you could give us a reference, so we could pull up something that he did. Is he still there? So, he was part of Hager's transition operation, in which Dr. Williams informed Thrash that his employment with Thornton Township had been terminated effective immediately due to misconduct and insubordination. Dr. Williams letter emailed Thrash a copy of the termination letter, as well as long with a copy of the supposed legitimate write-ups for the insubordination and misconduct that were placed in Thrash's personal file. The notice of termination stated that on April 28th, 2023, Thrash had failed to, this, this is what they came down to. This is how stupid and petty they is. He failed to punch in and out appropriately. And that on May 30th, 2023, Thrash was disciplined for insubordination, unsatisfactory work performance. And Thrash was like, I never saw this a damn my life. However, the writers were supposedly created while Thrash was on a full vacation time, and Thrash never seen, seen them, or nor was he notified of the existence of these writers. While employed with Thornton Township, Thrash was a, was, uh, sorry, just an employee that enjoyed dedicated, I'm getting tired, y'all, I'm three hours in, okay? My mind getting messed up, this is what happens, okay? So, please work. Okay, so, Thrash was a dedicated employee that enjoyed to work, the work he did. And he plans to stay with Thornton Township for the remainder of his career. So, he already setting up, oh, you owe me. This is how he starts to set the litigation for the damages. So, you see how the tone is starting to change, they put the claim out there, now, we're gonna be coming to the end of it, they, they, um, set up, the synopsis. Thrash has worked hard to earn and maintain good personal professional reputation as a public servant, and the result enjoys a good personal professional reputation at public service in the community. Having worked for Thornton Township for 20 years, so he's setting up shop, basically saying what they did, the detrimental, uh, actions they took towards his character, assassinated professional, um, future professional, uh, situations that he may have been privileged to. That's what he's starting to set up right here in this statement, okay? So, ever since Hager became mayor of the Village of Dalton and supervisor of Thornton Township, she and her closest allies within the Village of Dalton and Thornton Township, including Freeman, has terminated the employment of several individuals they feel pose a political threat. This is a, this is a rebuttal. Doesn't it sound familiar to the people who listen to me read these court cases? Again, this is the same thing, this is part of Tiffany legacy. So, they make these people, individuals feel that she is retaliating against them, because she feels posed a political threat to Hager and her public image, and/or run afoul of Hager and Freeman by defying their wishes. So, it's either they think you a threat, you actually a threat, or you not listening to their asses, and you out of there. Freeman should be going to jail too, especially how much he spent in 2023. He, I don't give, I don't care if he ratting, he need to get some time. I'm not about to play with Freeman either, I don't have no sympathy for him, he got the goat. He involved in most of these lawsuits, and he came there to help. And the trustees, I'm not saying trustees, this is the truth, but allegedly, they think that people saying that y'all okay were working with Freeman. And I'm not with that, I think y'all should not trust and suffer. He had almost every damn lawsuit related to corruption and coercion with this broad. Next to thick leg Louis Lacy. Tell me I'm lying, y'all, don't worry, we're gonna get through this. So, the stated reasons for the termination were usually pretextual or construed, while the real reason was usually malicious, paranoid, and based on some kind of perceived fear of disloyalty and the risk of bad press for Hager. As such, Thornton Township has a well-settled and wide policy of retaliation against employment. As such, Thornton Township has a well-settled and wide policy of retaliation against employees for their speech. And association, terminating the employees, employment of employees if they pose any kind of perceived political risk to Henry. Or if they don't com- um completely fall in line with the totalitarian allegations. I'm sorry, totalitarian agendas of Henry and Freeman, okay? Thornton Township employee policies and procedure may include policies and procedures on progressive discipline, including verbal warning, written. Warning, suspension, demotion before filing termination, however, the policies were not followed by Thornton Township. When they terminated Thrash's appointment. So Thrash was terminated without pre-termination or post-termination hearing. As a result of this termination, Thrash suffered emotional and economic har- harm. Here go the setup. So now this is the counts. So his First Amendment retali- under the First Amendment retaliation under freedom of speech against all defendants. So it was his freedom to stand up for himself. So as stated in one to forty-two that we just read, Thrash reinstated the allegation, okay? Moving on, defendant violated Thrash free speech right. Because they terminated Thrash employee retaliation for defying Freeman and Henry by not. Simply rubber stamping their choice for Township School Board Attorney. As the president of the Tor- of the Township, of the Township School Board, as well as Thornton Township. Resident, taxpayer, and Thornton Township employee. Thrasher felt that this was an important matter for the public concern who would serve as Township School Board Attorney. And he was simply doing his job that the voters elected him to do by refusing the role model with the defendant unlawful scheme and conspiracy. The termination of Thrash's employment amount to the constitutional deprivation. There we go. This is why I said in the beginning of this live that the police and the public official meeting understand constitutional law. And go over it year, not three years, okay? Because they violate in every which way they can in every lawsuit. It just doesn't make sense. How you put somebody in a position and they don't know their dog? Or to lose that government. So Thrash vocal refused to go along with defendant unlawfully, unlawful scheme and conspiracy. During the Mother's Day phone call with Henry and Freeman, and refused to attend the unauthorized special meeting. Was within his free speech right, and defendant discharged Thrasher for reason that infringed upon the constitutional protection. Interest and freedom of speech. The speech Thrash engaged in was constitutionally protected by the defendant retaliate, by the defendant retaliating against him. Because of that speech. As such, Thrash established that his allegation constitutional deprivation. Are motivated by his free speech. So this is how they incorporate the constitutional law into what he, he did. And he spoke up for himself, not only for his position, but for his rights. So while Thrash was a public employee, his speech is constitutionally protected. And interest is expressing himself as a private citizen on a matter of public concern. Which outweighs any injury of speech that could cause Township, Thornton Township interest. In promoting effective and efficient public service. Additionally, the performance of his job as president of the Township School Board was wholly separated from the performance of his job as the maintenance manager. From Thornton Township. That's why they vote, they people shouldn't have two positions anyway. I'm just saying. There's more people who need jobs out here, while I have you here, you got two positions. You know how many people need employment? Oh, Mr. Roberts, are you running for trustee officially? Please let us know in the comment, because we did hear that Ms. Mary is running. So I hope you're running, Mr. Roberts. Please save us, okay? I need an official notice from you. So let's go down into it. The interests of Thrash committed on the matter is not our way by Thornton Township interest. Okay, so let's keep it moving. Now, um Thrash's speech was at least mo- a motivating factor in significant conditions. Of the defendant's decision to terminate his employee employment with the village. As such, the protected activities and the adverse actions were not wholly unrelated. Alright, so the temporary proximally, so they keep talking about, this is about his Freeman speech. He did good. Okay, I, I even had to stop reading this because he gave so much detail. Remember in the last lawsuit, I was like, they should have just added a little bit more. They added some more here, so he basically gave more reasoning of how his freedom of speech. Was directly infringed upon and is connected to the Constitution, okay? And it says the temporary proximal Thrasher freedom of speech and his termination cannot be denied. Thrasher was terminated nearly one month after unauthorized Township School Board meeting, so he's giving more examples. So if you have a lawyer writing stuff, you want them to give these examples to give you more clarity to your claim. Alright, let's move down to the next one. Oh, before we go to the next one, this is where he's acting for. Mr. Thrasher wants, he coming for blood. Thornton Township, please be on a lookout that you don't be broke like Dalton. He won back pay in amount to be determined at the trial, front pay. Front pay in the amount to be determined by the trial. This mean that he was putting on work in there for the rest of his life. That's what front pay mean. Okay, compensatory and consequential damages that come in the emotional distress. He want money for that punitive damage, and that's where you can get a lot of money from. Uh prejudgment and post-judgment interest at the height of the lawful rate. You remember that it was like a six percent or something interest rate on that thirty-three point five million dollar case and a penalty? That's what they're talking about here. Attorney fees caused of this action. An injunction and other permanent restraint, um re- uh re- retrainment, restraining. Sorry, Thornton Township and its officer, agent, successor, employee representative, accused Henry and Freeman. They want, he want restraining order on them. He said from engaging any such further unlawful conduct in employment practices, including the policies and practices complained there him. You think they gonna listen, y'all? Talk about, we gonna sue you and put it in a restraining order. They said, well, Freeman said, I'm done. I ain't going, I'm old. I'm about to rat on you. Henry is still not listening. He like, don't put me on a credit card. Put your pussy on a credit card. You ain't gonna directly connect me to that. Alright, guys, we getting to the end of this. We probably have another half an hour. I want to say thank you for being with us. As I told you, this was gonna be a three-hour live, and we hitting that three-hour point, okay? Hope you guys learned a lot tonight. This is the second count in the Thrasher versus Thornton Township lawsuit. Again, if you don't understand, this gentleman was a maintenance director of Thornton Township, as well as he became the president of the school board. This is why the school board, well, well, Henry had a problem with the school board because. According to this allegation, she, she was trying to take it over with, with um. And what could I call, I'm trying to find a nice way to call Andrew Holmes instead of calling him a sexual, you know what? A sexual D V. Let me call Holmes a sexual D V. How about that? That's the best way. What the hell is that? Can y'all hear me? Because something going in and out, and I don't want it to mess up. Y'all can hear me, right? Let me call uh Holmes a sexual D V, okay? So they use homes in this as well. And, and homes, what the hell? Y'all hear that, y'all? Oh, my, um. It's like something going in and out of like a USB going in and out of my stuff, so I hope y'all can, y'all hear that. And I'm trying to make sure my sound is still good. Is my sound? Yeah, I can see my sound. Alright, let's get down to the end of this. So now this is the count two, Fourteenth Amendment retaliation. So we already know they start retaliating by firing him. So as reinstated by laws one to fifty-four that we read. This is um Thrash reinstates the allegations. Now, as a public employee alleges, um as a public employee alleges dismissed for pause. Thrash was entitled to pre-termination hearing prior to his termination, as well as a post-termination hearing after his termination. This pre-termination hearing is the initial check against mistaking decision, essentially a determination of whether there were the reasonable grounds to. Believe that the charges against the employee are true in support of the proposed action. So this is how they violated his Fourteenth Amendment, and that's without the due process, okay? The public entity prior to the termination must provide oral or written notice to the charges against the employee. And explanation of the employer's evidence and the opportunity to present his side to the story. Okay, Thrash was denied the pre-termination and post-termination hearing was not present um. Present evidence of any alleged misconduct or insubordination. Who was not given any opportunity to present his side of the story or present evidence as a witness testimony. Thrash constitutional injury, his testimony was caused by persons with final policymaking authority, which was Freeman. So this is how his treatment is involved. You violate his constitutional right. The special assistance of uh supervisor Thornton Township and Henry Supervisor Thornton Township. Wherefore plaintiff Dwayne Thrash respectfully requests the judgment to be interlegible to defendant. And as stated from A to H, these are all the things that he wants, the same thing. Count three, this is a co- uh common law retaliatory dis- discharge against. All defendants, so that is because they fired him. The more count that they have in this lawsuit, the more money he can get. And that's why they're gonna pull as many laws and see what counts fly by the judge. They can move, the judge can remove some, but this is how they going to have the basis for their monetary funds to be collected. Does that make sense? So basically, the United States has clearly ma- um maintained public policy in favor of protesting the illegitimate. Policies and practices of government agencies, as well as protecting freedom of speech. Thrash was simply doing his job as president of the Township School Board by not rubber stamping the defendant Township School Board Attorney candidate. And refusing to participate in an illegitimate unauthorized meeting and all unlawful scheme and conspiracy. To take over. You know how much money again goes through the school district? Go look at your taxes. Henry was trying to get that money. I have got to have an offshore account. I, that's what I think. Thrash's termination was no doubt in retaliation for defying Henry and Freeman desire. At the Township School Board fire their current attorney and hired Henry and Freeman for attorney candidate. Without a legitimate vetting process. Illinois has clearly maintained public policies in favor of prevented retaliatory acts according to the workplace. Which at all times they care applies to Thornton Township. Defender acted in disregard in discharging Thrash in retaliation for his act. Activity violated the clear mandated policies in favor to protect the illegitimate. Illegitimate policies of the government agency as well as protecting freedom of speech. So he should have said the suggested policy, so should have clearly suggested mandated public policies in favor of protesting. Because it's not a written policy. They're actually underlining suggested policies by Henry's team. Okay, administration, and that's how it was written in another lawsuit, because it's like an undertone. Uh we know what the law say, but we want to tell you what we say. So Thrash has suffered a loss of income and significant emotional distress as a re- result of the defendant's retaliatory actions. Conspiracy. You wanna talk about conspiracy? At, almost every lawsuit has this. Henry has to go to jail. Come on, man, you trying to lock everybody else on Rico. She has to go. Now, this is how this is conspiracy against all the defendants, and that's who we're talking about. We're talking about um Freeman and Henry. Freeman is in entwining this so bad. Thrash was deprived of constitutional right when his employment was terminated and violation of his First Amendment right. The defendant made an agreement to deprive Thrash of his constitutional right by terminating his employment without the due process, as we mentioned. After he refused to participate in the unlawful scheme scheme to terminate the Township Board Attorney, as we talked about. There were actually deprivations of Thrash's right uh arise from overt acts and further into the agreement. So let's go to this. Defender has well-settled and widespread policies of retaliation. So he's not written. They should, they should subliminal, because they not written. But defender has a well, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm up here, y'all. That's my line. Defender has a well-settled and widespread policy of retaliation against employees for their speech and association. Terminating the employee of employees if they pose highly perceived, we talked about that. Alright, so at least several other former Thornton Township and village of Thornton employees. Besides Thrash have been terminated by Henry and Freeman for similar dubious in. What is this? Sur- super, I'm saying that wrong. Reasons, so it's dubious, which is stupid. Reasons within the last few years, including but not limited to LaBelle, members of LaBelle Redman. That's the gentleman who she hired was who was actually in jail for hiring a young girl when he was young. Well, he was in jail for like fourteen years, and Henry allegedly gave him opportunity. I did read this article, I, I mean not the article, I did read the case, but I did share with you guys, because I don't really promote. I can't say that Mr. LaBelle Redman didn't change his life, but I don't want to have nothing to do with that. So he can handle his business. There's people who, you know, give him the limelight, but I will not. So that is who risk of Redman is. He's suing Henry because then she went back and got on him because he didn't want to take up for her. As well, he, I guess he had moral compass in whatever she was trying to make him do. Karen Jones, we read about Karen Jones. I think that's the lady who processed the business. I think Karen Jones, because between Karen Jones and Shamaya Williams, those two, one was processing, processing the business um permit. And Johnson had some, I, I read her case, I read her case, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Ms. Tracy, Mario Vaughn, uh they put Collins name up there. That's uh Collins, you are, you was a henchman for a minute, just for a little while. Bruce Owens, Jessica Jones, and Stephanie Reederman. Shout out to Stephanie Reederman. If you ever want to contact Grace Leebaugh, please contact me. I know you got juice. If you ever have information that you would like me to share and that we can share on my platform factual, you know what I'm saying, Ms. Reederman? Shout out to you. I've been somebody else who I wanted to get in contact with too as well. Because you know, if you gonna come up here, we gonna do it differently, different. Now, I know sometimes y'all see some of my lives and I get a little to the left. Let me be who I am, which I know when I'm going through these interviews, we gonna put this work up here, we gonna get professional. I can be professional, y'all, so don't underestimate Grace Leebaugh. I'm just definitely different. So I invite y'all to my platform. I've definitely set it up respectfully. We'll have it set up real good so we can educate the people and make it happen, you know what I'm saying? We're a little different, but we all are connected. We are the same in a way, okay? Alright, now, let's get into it. We almost done. We on page thirteen or twenty, getting down to the end. I'm doing so good. Hit the like button, especially to the people who was like, I don't want to hear AI readers. You hearing me read tonight? Do you like it? I'm tired, three hours in. Give me, give me the like, okay? So additionally, Freeman attempted the same maneuver with Dalton West School District. Oh shit, Freeman was coming to take over by Illinois, like give me the money. To, from the Board Education Dalton School Board in December two thousand and twenty-three by approaching the board members and trying to convince them. To fire their attorney employee Freeman's preferred attorney Delgado. This is nepotism at its fucking greatest. This is terrible. And after they, he was rebuffed, rebuffed, made sure that these individual was terminated from their job with Thornton Township. And the, and the village of Dorso. Anybody who went against them, they fired them. Therefore, plain debris trash respectfully request that the judge be entered against the defendant. They gave more examples of how like, I'm not the only person that this happened to. Look at this case, this case, this case, this case, this case. This is how you set up a case. They wrote this one amazing. This one was good. The first case was written up decent too. The Duke's case, but this one right here, yeah, they got in. So let's get into the next count, common law, in- intentional infliction of emotional distress against all defendants. So basically, they, they tried to bully him. They tried to scare, you know what I'm saying? Let's get it. Um, let's start at seventy-three. Defendant either intended that their conduct would inflict severe emotional distress. Or knew that there, let's see how they connected it to their action, because you see how they could put the law out there and sometimes don't connect it to their actions? But this is all the fifth, but I skipped seventy-two. Let's go back to seventy-two. Additionally, defendant committed these acts while acting in the pole position of authority to Thrash. Which makes this act de facto extreme and outrageous, because you know that Freeman had no authority over him. Talking about I'm gonna hold the board meeting. This shit was the fact of, fake fraudulently. Defendant into either intimate that their conduct would inflict severe emotional distress. Or knew that there was at least a high probability of their conduct. or knew that there was at least a high probability that their conduct could cause severe emotional distress when they retaliated against Thrash. So basically, he's saying that they did it on some strong line and stuff. And that's how he showed to retaliate, well, this right here was the, um, what is it? The, um, emotional distress. You see how he pulled in that statement of what, what they did? And they basically was de facto entity over him, trying to tell him what to do and put out a fake meeting. Now, it says defendant in a court case makes take, may take his plaintiffs as he find them. This is a little bit of the law. This is the law that it, um, connects to. This is not a law seminar, so I'm not gonna teach y'all that. So then this is the claims again from A, this is what he want. From A to H, this is the relief, the same relief, he want blood. Now, he goes into violation of Illinois Personnel Record Review Act because they put fake allegations in here. They put fraudulent documents in this shit. He haven't even been presented, presented with this stuff, so here we go. As presented seventy-six, Thrash's personal file contains three false write-ups. These write-ups were, uh, upon information and belief created right before or right after Thrash's termination were not legitimate and were falsely created in order to justify the termination of his employment. Write-up number one was dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Right around the time that he's meeting, remember? With date infraction alleged occurrence between January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. To April what? Hold on, let me read this. They just made up some stuff. Let me read it. With the date infraction alleged occurrence between January tenth two thousand and twenty-three to April two thousand and twenty-three regarding missing punches, felony punch in and out appropriately. And this is the time they took the chance to get after him about punching in. You know this when they coming for you guys and that's when you need to give your thirty day, get the hell out of there. Or hold on to your job till they fire you and send the shit out of them, whatever works. Okay, so write-up was not signed by Thrash nor witnessed by any other employee. Write-up number two was dated on May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three with a date and infraction alleged occurred on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three in which Thrash was accused of insubordination for felony write-up an employee named Barry who was wa- washing his personal things at a garage on a township town without permission. This writer was not signed by Thrash nor witnessed by any other. And if Barry didn't get on the insubordination for washing his clothes, because Barry probably felt bad. Why the hell was y'all employee having to wash his clothes at the garage? Cause she was paying him probably thirty thousand dollars, which is way below minimum wage or even what humans can survive in America. So that's probably why he was washing it if it happened and that's why Thrash didn't write him up if it happened. So write-up number three was dated May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three with the date of an infraction alleged occurring on February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four in which Thrash was accused of insubordination for felony clean the refrigerator. Yo, I am so done. Y'all can see my face. Do, do, that's why somebody don't want you there. So this fighter was not signed by Thrash nor witnessed by any other employee. Pursuant to the Illinois per- personal record review act, either the employee or the employee knowingly placed the personnel record information, which is false. The employee or the employ- the employer or the employee, which is inappropriate, which have, um, remedied through legal actions to have that information expunged. So they like, you gotta take that out of my personal records, but they going after his character. That's why this man going to get more money out of Thornton, y'all. Damn, y'all need to get this brat out of here. I think, hold on, was that it? That was the end of it? Okay, so that was the last charge, y'all. We made it through the document. So again, let's just clarify what Mr. um, Thrasher wants from Thornton. He says the order requiring Thornton Township to expunge the three, now he's under this allegation. Um, expunged the three false written up in Thrasher personnel file. All statutory damages under the Illinois Personal Record Review Act included two hundred plus costs, reasonable attorney fee and actual damages, money connected to these charges. Compensatory damages including the emotional distress. Cause y'all literally tried to bully this man and intimidate him. Pre-judgment and post-judgment interest at the highest lawful rate. Now, remember the pre-judgment starts from the day of the filing of lawsuit. And post-judgment is from the day of the judgment until they pay. If they have a delay in pay, that post-judgment interest occurs. Does that make sense, y'all? Any other such relief as the Honorable Court finds reasonable. Okay, so this is the two lawsuits that I wanted to go over with you guys today. I do have more lawsuits. Let me put myself on the screen. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you for being here with Grace Leiva. Thank you for being a loyal friend to me. I love y'all. Y'all stayed the whole, y'all stayed the whole live and I know that y'all learned a lot. So if y'all have any questions or anything when I actually break this up, I'm gonna break this up into a three-part series. So the first part is gonna be me and y'all cracking on Dalton documentary release. Remember they released that video of Thornton Township representative being arrested for having marijuana and a gun in Thornton car. That was the first ad. That, shout out to Dalton documentaries for getting that. And then we went into the Fenea Duke's case and, you know, clearing up some of the perspectives. And then we just went into the Thrasher case, okay? I'm playing catch-up, y'all, because they were trying to take me off my A game, but I'm here for it, okay? I love y'all. So what I'm gonna be doing next week, let me just, actually coming up. Mr. Roberts, if you are still there, I will be reaching out to you this weekend on Sunday evening. I'm gonna let you, because I know people, um, they practice on Sunday. So these are the two lawsuits that we just went over. The next ones we're gonna be going over is, um, Thornton two thousand, well, not lawsuit, but next topics is gonna be Thornton two thousand and twenty-four bank records and credit card records. Because what we went over was this two thousand and twenty-three. And thanks to Ty as well as the efforts of Mr. Roberts, that a lot of this financial information came out. So that's what you gotta be looking for coming up. Hopefully I can, um, me and Mr. Roberts get together so we can present that together. We also gonna go over this third lawsuit possibly Sunday. Um, this is the third lawsuit that they were presenting at the last special meeting. These last lawsuits that we just read to you was the lawsuits that was on a warrant list, if you don't understand the connection. The warrant list that was just there the other day, these were the two lawsuits. Now, this is the third one. This is Larry Lawrence versus Thornton Township, okay? So we'll be going over that on Friday, I mean, no, I'm sorry, on Sunday. And also we're gonna get into the, um, Destiny Hall that is the independent administrative estate of Timothy McDaniel Hall. I think this was, let me make sure that this not the kill shot. This is another police, oh no, this is the kill shot. We did the kill shot again. I have this out because I have to look at this for reference for my investigation. But ooh, ooh, where I'm at, y'all? Okay, I hit the button. But we will go over the Lawrence, um, case on Sunday. And again, Mr. Roberts, we're gonna be talking so next week we can set something off at your early convenience to go over the two thousand and twenty-four financing of what was, uh, reached through the Freedom Information Act that I have and maybe you have more. Lord, I'm sorry. I love you guys. So I'm a little tired, been two hours. I hit the, it's two hours mark, hit the like button. I put in that work. Okay, and I'm gonna keep saying this to the people who get on my damn nerves talking about. Why you always use the AI reader? Cause I be tired, cause I'm a human being. But we could do this. You ain't gonna discount my reading skills, okay? That's what I think y'all was trying to say, but I got you. I got you, got you, got you. Anyway, I love you guys. Let me take my booty off the screen. We're going to finish off with some Hebrew music. You know how we do. Let's get it. Let's go to another one. This is, this is a song I like, y'all. We're gonna listen to one more song, because this is the song I actually like. I wish I got my favorite. Don't you, don't you play a commercial? Hold on, y'all, they said no, we ain't about to play this song for them. We gonna go off with a bang. Don't you do it to me, baby. Be weird to me on the last part of the line. Oh, they said because your ass is on a keyboard. There we go, they got my favorite.
Every election. So now, because they can't beat me, they gotta do this smear campaign to convince public opinion that I'm bad for them.
Should we say it to election? You were first elected in two thousand and twenty-one?
No, twenty thirteen was my first election for trustee. I was a trustee. I sat where they are. That's why I know the law.
Elected mayor two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes.
Term is four years?
Yes.
Okay, uh, plans of running for reelection?
I'm running for both my seats and I'm gonna win them.
So, and when is the election for Thornton Township?
Twenty twenty-five.
So those elections are the same time?
They are.
Tom McDonald exposed the truth about the system.
I could not be here breathing and be comfortable if I was really as bad as they was making it. You know, nobody could be around me. So for me to be this calm, I must have some kind of inner peace. And my inner peace is knowing that once everybody take the time to really see what type of person I am, you'd be surprised that I stuck around this long. I have to make the life that I do live as happy as I can and try to do the best with what I have. You know, live the best life I can live, be as happy as I can be. Nothing is perfect for anybody.
Boys, I swear, I think I figured it out. You know why they don't want us redneck brothers and sisters and hood brothers and sisters getting along? You know why? Because we be unstoppable. I'm telling you right now, we would shut shit down.
Would you like to learn a brand new and innovative way to invest your extra money that has a low barrier to entry and low competition? What if I told you that it is a guaranteed method to get up to eighteen to twenty percent return on your investment? Tax lien and deed purchasing is the only way to get into the real estate market through the back door. No credit and no loans needed. This method isn't commonly taught and therefore the competition is very low for now. Put together a fourteen-hour info-packed course, which will teach you everything you'll need to know to get started. Learn at your own pace, step-by-step guided video and aids to start you on the TLC deed investment process. The course offers many learning tools for new investors, helping ensure you safely invest in tax liens and deeds. Contact us today and join the buyback team.